This meeting is being recorded per Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7B.
All right, thank you, and welcome everybody to the May 2020 Meeting of the Weathersfield Zoning Board of Appeals and start with just a rundown of what our evening will look like so we all have a sense and I'll first thank all of our IT support for helping getting us set up with our virtual meeting this month again. And a reminder, if possible, just to help with minimal or minimizing background noise while you're not speaking, would be able to mute your mute your settings, that would be great. And then we'll make sure to offer ample time when it is the opportunity to speak to allow you to get off mute and get those comments in. We have two applications this evening and the way the meeting will be structured, we'll start with our public hearing. We'll go one at a time on the applications, reading the application into the record. We'll then hear a staff report that's been prepared for each application. Then we'll hear testimony from the applicant and the folks who are applying for the variance. There'll be opportunity there for questions from the commissioners and opportunity for the applicant to offer any additional information that is desired and will also, as we conclude the public hearing on each of the applications, there will be opportunity for anyone who has joined who wishes to speak either in favor of or against the application for the variance. At the point we've concluded the public hearing for both applications, we'll make a motion and we'll move into our public meeting and that's just an important breakpoint to keep in mind because once we've closed the public hearing and we move into the public meeting, there's actually no further testimony at that point. It's just the commissioners discussing and eventually coming to vote on the application. And so as I said, once we move into the public meeting, it'll be discussion amongst the commissioners. We do have and potentially some questions for the zoning enforcement officer for clarification. We do have six commissioners on tonight, so we will need to decide Rita and Paul, if you have a preference on which of the two applications you'd wish to vote on, we can decide that as we get closer. But we'll have five voting members for each application. Four affirmative votes are required for the variance to be approved. So if it's three to two in favor, the variance actually is not approved. At that point, you need four affirmative votes, either four to one or five to nothing. And at the point we've concluded the public meeting and the vote on the applications, we do have additional items on the agenda. But obviously, you know, you're welcome at that point. If you've only joined us for a specific purpose, you're welcome to drop. But the rest of our agenda quickly will consist of approving the minutes from our last meeting. There will be an opportunity then for public comment on any zoning board of appeals matters that otherwise weren't covered during the course of the evening. We are hoping to finalize our and formalize our officers for the remainder of the year and then we will adjourn. So with that, again, thank you for joining. Thank you for your patience as we get through this in a in a virtual setting. And we will begin, if I could have a volunteer among the commissioners to read the first application into the record. And I can do it if that would be better. I'll take the first one and if somebody wants to jump in for the second one. So the first application is application number 6231-20 variance from section 5.2 permitted principal uses to allow business use in the residential district, i.e. former accessory business use, private arts academy to be permitted as a principal use arising out of proposed subdivision of lot known as 411 to 431 Hartford Avenue, which houses the academy in the accessory structure known as 431 Hartford Avenue, as shown on assessor's map submitted. Residential Zone B, location 411 to 431 Hartford Avenue, applicant Douglas R. Buck. And Charles, if you want to start us with the reading of your report and then we'll move to testimony from the applicant.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, so just to give you a little background to this application here, the subject property known as 411 to 431 Hartford Avenue. And this is the number that that's given to the property by the assessors. So if you look at the assessors map, you will see 411 to 431 Hartford Avenue. And this this property as a whole currently contains a residential building in the southeast corner, which is the principal structure on the lot. And this structure for mailing purposes, this building rather for mailing purposes is known as 411 Hartford Avenue. Building number 431 to the northwest of the property is an accessory structure which currently houses the Weathersfield Arts Academy. So building number 431 formerly housed a storage rental business, which was legally conforming up until 2005. December 2005, the owners sought and obtained a variance from the zoning board of appeals to change from one nonconforming use to another nonconforming use of a lesser intensity, namely the Weathersfield Arts Academy. So today, 431 Hartford Avenue is a legal nonconforming business use in a residential zone, in a residential zone as an accessory structure. So and I'm going to read the exact variance that was granted and the variance was granted to change the use of accessory buildings from nonconforming storage rental to a business use private arts academy at 411 Hartford Avenue, West Side B residence zone. And you know that the property is oftentimes referred to as just 411. And that's that's how it is with most properties that has a double numbered address. They're usually referred to by the fore one. So 411 Hartford Avenue is synonymous with 411-431 Hartford Avenue today. So no, the stipulation that was granted for that variance, the stipulations included as follows, and there are three stipulations. Number one, intended use as arts academy only, so that the building can only be used for arts academy. And number two, all parking will be on property at 411 Hartford Avenue. No offsite parking permitted. And again, when they say 411, they were really specifically speaking to that parking lot that was designed around the southern section of the building that was to host the the Arts Academy. So parking will be on property 411 Hartford Avenue, no offsite parking permitted. And the west barn was not to be used for performing arts studio. It is the intention of the applicant to re-subdivide the property and transfer 431 to another entity. And I say re-subdivide because I learned that the section of this property, which is now known as 30 Jordan Lane, was a part and parcel. It was one complete parcel and then that was subdivided to become 430 Jordan Lane, which is currently office use. So that property is zoned for office. So it seems to me that the entire property was residential until that split was made and there was some kind of a zone change. That's just my estimation of this. Mr. Buck later on can probably corroborate that or deny that as the case may be. So it is the intention of the applicant, as I said, to re-subdivide the property and transfer 431 to another entity. I learned that the section of this property was previously cut off. This would mean that 431, 431 would now be deemed a principal structure. So if after today a variance was granted, then there was would be a re-subdivision. So you'd have two parcels now. You would have 411 and 431. So so both structures would be both buildings, I should say, would be principled buildings on two separate lots. So and it's it's my belief that the assessor would now maintain that 411 building as 411 and this new lot, so to speak, would become 431 Hartford Avenue for the assessors' records. The variance is necessary before going to the planning and zoning commission for this lot split. So the applicants could not have gone and get a lot split unless they get the variance for this this principal structure on on the residential property. So the applicant consulted with staff and expressed their intention to split the lot into two and to transfer 431 to a separate entity. Staff advised that in so doing, the Arts Academy would then become a principal structure, as I noted before, and and would lose the legal and conforming status as a nonconforming use in a residential accessory building to becoming a nonconforming principal use which would be legal. And and this means that the applicant would have to seek and obtain the variance before any lot split can be considered. Therefore, the ZBA will be viewing this variance application for approval subject to the lot split. So if the variance is not granted, then there cannot be a lot split because it would create an illegal land use. So in summary, the applicant is seeking to secure a variance before proceeding to the planning and zoning commission. If the board was to consider granting a variance tonight, it would have to state on the record that this variance would be contingent upon the lot split being approved by the planning and zoning commission. The applicant served their advice staff that the proposed lot split would make both parcels in conformity with the bulk requirements of the zone. So for instance, the side set box, side yard set box, rear front yard set box would be in conformity with the requirement for a residential zone. I was contacted by a resident a couple of weeks ago who questioned whether this new business use, if approved, would allow any other business such as a retail sales to move into the building sometime in the future and conduct business. My response was that business use in this context refers to the school as being a school as being a business entity in itself, but not the school as a business source to to sell things, retail or conduct any other business apart from. And then again, the stipulation from the variance said that it should be used solely for the Arts Academy. So any any kind in my estimation, any kind of sales from this building from this Arts Academy would be something relating to like materials for the school, for the students use as a part of the school as opposed to every day sale to the general public. So I quoted the number one condition of the 2005 ZBA approval which stipulates intended use as arts academy only. I stated further that if the academy was to move out of the lot, it would be zoned residential. It would still be zoned residential. And if any other use, whether business or any other type of use wishes to to come into that that building, the property would have to, they would have to seek a zone change from the planning and zoning commission or apply to this board for for a use variance. In other words, any contemplated change of views of this property would require an approval from the relevant board. And this is duly submitted by myself and that's that's my report for staff regarding the application for the variance for 411 to 431 Hartford Avenue, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Charles. If we could have the applicants unmute and if you would, if whoever is going to speak would just start by stating your name and address for the record and tell us more about what you'd like us to know about the application and then we'll have an opportunity for some questions from commissioners as well. So who do we have speaking on behalf?
I will I will start. My name is Douglas Buck, 411 Hartford Avenue, and I'm here with my wife, Virginia. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, good evening, sir.
Okay, and basically we have, well, Charles gave a very good summary of everything. So basically, we are planning to donate that parcel to Weathersfield Academy to the arts. So they can receive funding and donations and and grants to be able to fix it up a little better and improve the parking area. We ran out of money. We couldn't finish putting all this shrubbery in and finishing the parking area. So it looks really nice for the community. So that's one of the reasons and also give the opportunity, the academy an opportunity to to remain and hire better teachers and maybe reduce the cost of tuition a little bit for the students. So we think it would be a great asset, improved asset for the community to do that. As you know, the variance was already given. So if we don't have permission to tonight and to divide the lot, we'll just keep it the way it is with the present variance. But we think both for us and for the academy, it would be very beneficial and for the community to donate that parcel to them. So that's basically why we're seeking this variance. Also, as you know, be resident zones are zoned for schools. But you have all these regulations that say an art school is not a school. Doesn't qualify under your regulations. So I don't know. Anyway, it's a it's a school and we 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 hope the school and we we believe the school is one of the finest in the country, one of the finest in New England. It's conservative. It's classical realism is what they teach, careful art learning and drawing and portraiture. It's not your usual run-of-the-mill art school where you throw things on the wall and see where it sticks. My wife's had a vision. She's right here. She can explain a little more to you. Anyway, we believe it'd be a great asset to the community and enable the academy to proceed and to expand a little bit.
If I may say so, I'm Virginia Buck. I'm the other half of this group here.
She's the better half.
And there are only two really good classical realism schools, which are is an art system based on the early, early Rembrandts and Da Vinci type of art school training. One is in in New York near Long Island called the Grand Central Academy and the other one is the Realist School in Boston. And we are right smack fortunately in the middle, so people don't have to travel two hours to get there. We can we can provide this very excellent basic classical training for children all the way up to my age, which is considerable. And I have enjoyed when it opened some 10, 12 years ago, a tremendous education in how to draw and paint and to have even won awards from my studies at this academy. It is wonderful. And our students do very well in shows and so do the adults who attend the classes. And we have the best instructors from all over the country. And we believe it'd be a great asset to the academy if we they could get grants. So and we wanted to do this in the beginning, way back when we first opened it, but a piece of property that my mother had on our land was tied up with her estate. And so we could only divide the property by one parcel and that parcel was already allocated. So now that she had passed away, the property reverts to us. So we can now take advantage of this nonprofit status for the academy. And we really are very excited to to see this come to fruition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now we will open it up to questions from commissioners and I have just a couple. Just so the the desire is to split the parcel so then the academy itself would become the owner of 431?
Correct.
Okay, and that, as you said, would be beneficial for them from securing funds and other areas. Are they, do they effectively pay you rent now for the use of the property or how what's the current arrangement?
Yes, they pay us rent.
Okay.
Correct. They also take care of all the utilities and insurance.
Okay. All right. Well, let me, you answered the other ones that I had. So let me open it up. We can kind of go around the horn. Any of the other commissioners want to weigh in? Looks like Dan's gonna unmute.
Yes, just a quick question regarding parking. Does this impact parking any which way when you subdivide the lot?
It's the same.
It'll remain the same?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to have to complete, complete the parking lot. Only half of it's paved right now.
Okay.
Ran out of money.
I think he's looking at terms of space, aren't you?
Terms of space.
In terms where you divide the lot.
It stays the same. Everything stays the same.
Okay, thank you. All right, and I can see the other four of you. So I'll just, if you want to give me a quick nod, if you want to weigh in with any questions.
Eric, I gotta
It's like everybody.
More so for more so for Charles, if does the current parking meet the the new use potentially already, an amount of spots?
The parking, to the best of my recollection, had met the parking requirements from, yes, from the beginning. So yeah, there's no issue with parking.
All right, it looks like everybody else has said. I do have one question and Charles, I'll start with you and then we can get the applicants to weigh in. Looking at the, and I've got a poor printout of the diagram right now, but there's a structure seemingly right in the middle of where the two properties would be subdivided. Do we have any concerns or is there any concern we need to have around whether that's got enough clearance from where the new property line would be?
It's a chicken house.
Ah, okay, thank you. That probably clears it up.
We don't have too many concerns, but but the biddies might have some.
And there's a fence there that separates.
Okay. And actually, that's that leads me to a question. So there is, where you're proposing to split the lot, you've already got fencing there that essentially separates the school from
Always stay where it is.
Okay, so from that perspective, the physically in terms of how the combined property is used today, Mr. and Mrs. Buck, you're saying that the use would stay the same. It just is a split of property and transferring the ownership of 431 to the school itself.
Exactly.
Okay. And was, I know we had the variance that was read from 2005. Was that the, is that the start of the academy itself or does it precede that 2005 date?
It precedes the academy. We had to get the variance before we had the academy.
Oh, I got you. Okay, okay. Okay, any other questions from the commissioners? All right, Mr. and Mrs. Buck, anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think that's it.
All right, thank you. At this point, we will open it up. Do we have anybody on the line who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Charles, are you aware of anyone that we have?
Okay, yes, so that's Mr. Mark Wazilowski, and he had sent me an email earlier today, which I will read into the records. And he was in some, he is in support of the variance. And he he writes as follows. "I write in strong support of application number 6231-20 which seeks a use variance for 411 to 431 Hartford Avenue related to a subdivision of the property. I am both a close neighbor of the Bucs at 408 Hartford Avenue and the board chairman for the Weathersfield Academy of the Arts located at 431 Hartford Avenue. Doug Buck has indicated to me that it is his intention to subdivide the property and give the barns to the Weathersfield Academy of the Arts located at 431 Hartford Avenue. The barns at 431 Hartford Avenue are historic in nature. The academy, which is located in a portion of the barns, is a nonprofit arts academy that provides art instruction and other services that benefit our community. By passing the barns on to the academy, the Bucs are positioning the academy to thrive for years to become the Bucs' barns to be preserved and restored." And said, "Thank you, Mark E. Wazilowski."
Okay, thank you, Charles. Do you know, do we have anybody on the line who hadn't indicated speaking on or in favor of the application?
We have a couple of telephones here. I
All right.
I identified them by name, but if you're listening, you can unmute yourselves and
All right, and then we'll offer, is there anybody who wishes to speak on this application at all? We'll just keep it simple that way. Then if you want to tell us whether you're supporting approval of the variance or you're against the approval of the variance.
I do, I do, Mr. Chairman, I do have four other letters in opposition to the variance.
In opposition?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So let's make one last pass. Anybody on the line wishes to speak in support of it?
Can you hear me? I would like to speak. Charles Stewart.
Okay.
Okay.
Pardon me?
Yeah, just give us your name and just give us your name and address, please.
Charles Stewart, 416 Hartford Avenue. I do, I live directly across the street from the Buck property. I'm here with my wife and I I would like to make some general comments and then some specific comments. I would like to tell you that it is my belief that the majority of the residents on this street that I've spoken to are in favor of the academy and they are also very concerned about the preservation of the barns on the property. My general comment is that we should be more concerned about this property simply because it is as historic a property as you could find anywhere in this country. It goes back to 1730, perhaps even before. It's a gorgeous property and part of that attractiveness are two very large barns that are adjacent, somewhat connected to the art academy. And so I think that this this situation is more complicated than it appears because I think that it is in Weathersfield interest. I think it's in the Weathersfield Historic Society interest. I think it is in old Weathersfield interest and I think it's in the neighborhood interest as well as the Bucs' interest to preserve as well as the Bucs' interest, to preserve this property and to improve it, and to, in fact, promulgate it. However, the barns are in significant, and it is going to cost significant money, in my opinion, to bring them to the level that they need to be brought to. And I'm not certain that the academy is going to be capable of doing that initially. I think it needs, you know, an infusion of effort and maybe cash that doesn't exist right now. I've looked at some of the recent tax records of the academy, and it looks to me, from looking at those records, that they are just barely breaking even. The particular record I'm looking at right now is their, their revenue for 2018 came to a total of $123,000, and their expenditures came to a total of $121,000. So, to understand how complicated this is, I don't know the answers to any of this, but I know that the Bucs wish to transfer the property to the academy. One of the things that occurred to me was that when the academy was constructed, which was since I've been here, which was approximately 2005, the academy was built, it's virtually a new section of the building. The barns are in quite bad disrepair, but the academy is like a brand-new building. And I don't know if there's money owed on that, and I don't know if that's something that the academy would have to assume if the building were transferred to them and so forth, would they be able to do that? In any case, the, I think there are quite a few questions that need to be addressed, and I do think that everyone is supportive. But it's risky, I think, to jump into approving stuff if we don't really know what that totally entails. And I find it difficult to understand where they're going to get the money. I know that they, they're receiving money now in terms of grant monies. I would think they'd have to receive a great deal more grant money. I'm not certain that just moving the property to the school will do that, but I do think that it's probably a good move, as long as that the residential nature, which is single-family residential nature of the immediate area is maintained. I think that's very important. I also thought that there's another idea that I was thinking about, was that I think that the, the Bucs themselves have a very long history in Weathersfield, and it would be a very good opportunity to explore that from a historical perspective, and to perhaps create some sort of a museum which could work in the property, maybe in the barns, in conjunction with the Historic Society Museum, all of which is very complicated and very, you know, expansive. So, those are my thoughts.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Buck, if I could direct the question back to you, just related to the expenses that we heard about from Mr. Stewart. Are you able to share with us what the, I know you said the academy pays rent today. Roughly what percentage of those overall annual expenses go toward that?
Well, it's their largest expense, and basically, it goes for their portion of taxes, for insurance that we have to pay, and for repairs. We don't make any money off of it. I want to say a few words about what Charles Stewart said. He's very astute, his analysis is very, very carefully thought out and very accurate. And this property was given to our family in 1739 by my great-great-great-grandfather, Josiah Buck. And we've been wanting, we've been seeking of some way to improve it, but we cannot get grants, because grants only go to a 501(c)(3) organization, most of the grants. And that's one of the reasons why we want to donate it to the academy. They will be able to get the grant money, not only for the school, but also to improve the barns.
Okay, thank you. Charles, shall we come back to you? I believe you said you had other feedbacks from the community?
Okay, yes. So, we had, we have a few residents speaking against the variance, and the next letter.
If I may something, I'm one of the residents who sent in a letter. My name is Anya Keehan. I live at 424 Hartford Ave. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we have you. Thank you.
Yes.
So, I live directly across from, from the property as well, and I appreciate you, you know, answering a couple of questions we had, because it was not evident to us that the property at 431, the Arts Academy, is actually going to be existed to the Arts Academy itself. We did not know that. And our concerns, and that's why I wrote a letter, actually, was that we were worried that it goes to a third party, and would then be used for a business use other than the Arts Academy. I, the zoning board addressed a couple of questions we had, but I think a couple of other questions need to still be addressed, and that would be that if a variance is going to be granted, we should very carefully craft what the use of the property is, that it actually is only for the Arts Academy, what the parking situation is, and how we can further protect the historic character of the barns. I think one of the barns is not in use right now. That's part of the 2005 variance, and I would like to find out if there is, if there are plans to use it in the future, or if we stay with the same variance, how shall I say, with the same variance requirements from 2005.
All right, thank you for your comments. Mr. Buck, if I could go, come back to you, or Charles, if you have this. I'm just curious on that exclusion for the West Barn from the 2005 variance. Do we have insight as to why that was stipulated?
I really don't know. I don't know if Mr. Buck could shed an light on that. I don't know why the West Barn was omitted. And if you could just tell us which one of these barns are being referred to as the West Barn?
She asking me?
Yes, because I.
In my opinion, it's the biggest barn towards Jordan Lane.
Yeah, so, Mr. Buck, or Mrs. Buck, if you could give us just, as we look at the 431 plot from Jordan Lane, the immediate structure is the newer structure that was built for the Art Academy.
No.
And then, restored, I'm sorry. Okay. And then, there are two barns, as we go further back on that piece of the property. Is that correct?
Well, there's a, there's a shop and a garage, but they're 411 Hartford Avenue.
And it's okay, we don't have that background. I'm just looking, because we had some reference to the stipulations from the previous variance.
I'm talking about the academy property and the two barns that are left to be done.
Yes, the two, there, there's the, we restored the area where the academy now is housed.
Which is the former ox shed.
Former ox shed and carrot house. And the dimensions are exactly the same as before. The bays are the same size that they used to be before, and the, all the dimensions are the same. And the other, the middle barn, the large barn in the center, we wanted to restore, but we cannot do that right now. We don't have the funds for it. And then, the other barn to the west also needs to be restored.
A large barn.
It's a large barn.
Now, so, to follow, Mr. Chairman, it seems to me, it seems to me that the board wanted just that building in 431 to be used as the academy, and none of these other barns below should be used as the academy. That's, that's all I would.
Thank you. And Charles, you had other, I believe, other feedback you wanted to share?
So, yes, so, that was Ms. Andress Keehan spoke about, or, or a position to the variance. Then, we have another one coming in from Mark and Lisa Dematia. And they say as follows. "Their zoning board of appeals, we are the homeowners of 456 Hartford Avenue, located diagonally across the street from 431 Hartford Avenue, and have enjoyed living in this closely knit residential neighborhood since 2003. We received a neighbor notification through the mail regarding the proposed application, and also received a copy of the actual application from one of our neighbors who had requested it from the town. Our concern with this application is that the owner is requesting a change of use from non-conforming accessory business use on a residential zone property to a non-conforming primary business use on a residential zone property. This current requested variance application can lead to other, what they call unknown businesses, business uses in the large vacant portion of the barn complex located at 431 Hartford Avenue beyond the current private arts academy. Our fear is that in the future, the owner of the new subdivided property of 431 Hartford Avenue could go before the zoning board and request a zoning change to business use or mixed-use business, and argue the history of use for this property was approved twice prior by ZBA for a business use. Also, the proposed subdivided property is adjacent to the current office building on 30 Jordan Lane. What would stop the 30 Jordan Lane property owner in the future from purchasing 431 Hartford Avenue and apply to expand the property and resort to business? We are requesting that the ZBA denied the request to subdivide the residential property and uphold the existing stipulations granted in 2005 that was put on the property for the private use of the Arts Academy in the barn complex. Number one, may only be used for the intended use of Arts Academy. Number two, with powers at the discretion of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Number three, all parking will be on property, no offsite parking. And four, approved with the exception of the West Barn being used as a performing arts academy." And this is from Mark and Lisa Dematia, I'm sorry, 456 Hartford Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Charles, do you have others?
We have another one here from Doris Leclerc, Doris Leclerc and Rachel Leclerc, 434 Hartford Avenue, and they say that this letter is written in response to application number 6231-20 for 11 to 431 Hartford Avenue. "We are concerned about this application, as it uses the word 'business' in it several times. It appears to imply that this property could someday be zoned for business use. We are most interested in preserving the property and the barns that exist on the property. This is a significant piece of Weathersfield history, and we are in favor of anything outside of a business zoning for this purpose. Living across the street from this property for over 33 years has been, has seen it evolve. It has housed horses, a large skateboard ramp, and the barns that were used as a incentive, what they call of some sort. As large truck, trailer trucks would make late-night or early-morning deliveries on a regular basis, we have seen buildings taken down and then put back up again. When permission for the Arts Academy was granted, we were told that the property was zoned for school use. That was the intent of the Arts Academy, to be a school, not a business. We have seen plans that included extending the existing parking lot to the EverSource lot north of the property. We have seen a site map that showed 100 parking spaces on the existing property, other plans that had living quarters within the school building. These plans would not be in keeping with the residential intent of this area of Hartford Avenue. We are requesting that the property not be divided into two parcels, as that would provide the area, homeowners, and uncertainty to the future use of the barns. It needs to remain attached to the primary residence." Doris Leclerc and Rachel Leclerc.
Charles, this is Doris and Rachel. We're both on the line. And I had a couple more questions after hearing the comments from the previous participants. So, again, we are certainly in favor of preserving the history that's across the street. I am very confused as to when, all of a sudden, the school is now a business. We were told it was going to be a school. We thought that would open up lots of funding opportunities, so I guess I have a lot to learn about why schools can't be funded and grants get applied. And I was an educator for 40 years, so I knew how to get some of that money. My other question is, how do we know it will stay the same? We, what guarantee do we have that the Arts Academy will remain there? If they're unable to secure the funding on their own, now that they're going to be divided, why wouldn't they, they might have to move elsewhere if they could not get the funding to do what they want with the barns? So, we don't have a guarantee that it's going to stay the same as was stated. I hear the school is nonprofit. Again, I don't know why, and I guess I need more clarity. Why do we need a zone variance, and why do we need to split the property?
Exactly right.
If they're nonprofit, what would open up for them to get more funding? And again, we've been probably the longest-living residents across the street. We've seen that property evolve. We've been told lots of things, and then, all of a sudden, it isn't what we were told. It's become something different, and we're just very concerned that the street that we live on, that's very residential, is going to change into something different, and I would hope I hear some guarantees that it would never happen, but I don't think anyone tonight can answer that. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I may, in answer to the speaker's question, if the academy was to move out of that property, then, of course, what would happen? The property would still remain residential. The property is residential today, and the property would remain residential unless a zone change is sought and obtained from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, no, no entity can go and then take over and open a supermarket or anything on this property unless they go through the proper channel and have that approved by that board. So, that's the situation, that it's residential, and it will be residential until changed.
Charles, can we say a word or two?
Sure.
First of all, Doris Leclerc, she's a wonderful neighbor, and she needs to be on the Board of Directors for Weathersfield Academy, to be honest. I think she'd be a wonderful asset. I think she'd be a wonderful asset. But I wanted to read you this statement from the Certificate of incorporation for this nonprofit school regarding its dissolution. It says, if Weathersfield Academy for the Arts is dissolved for any reason, assets remaining after discharging all liabilities and necessary fees will be donated to one or more institutions for the arts in the greater Hartford area. So it would not go to what you would call a commercial use. It would stay as a school, as an arts academy, no matter what. And we have an incredible interest in preserving the barns. We want to see them. We just don't have the resources to do it. And the grants are unavailable unless we are a 501(c)(3) corporation.
Mr. Buck, to that question, so the school as it exists today is not yet a 501(c)(3)?
It is.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Yes.
And that status would be maintained even after this split, if it were to happen? If I could just ask, if you're not speaking, if you could mute, just so we minimize background noise? Charles, I want to go back to you. Did you have any additional feedback from the community?
Okay. We have one more letter. This one is from 450 Hartford Avenue in response to application number 6231-20 for 11 to 431 Hartford Avenue. Their zoning board of appeals. We have owned our home at 450 Hartford Avenue, which is located north of and diagonally east across the street from 411 to 431 Hartford Avenue for over 31 years, enjoying the close knit residential neighborhood and the desire to keep our residential neighborhood. We are writing this letter in response to receiving a neighbor notification through the mail regarding the proposed application 6231-20 for 11 to 431 Hartford Avenue, and information we've learned of the actual application. A proposed subdivision of the property and the owner requested zone change of use from non-conforming accessory business on residential property to non-conforming primary use business on residential zone property. We are concerned with this application's use of the word business several times, which to us implies that this application could become a stepping stone for the residential property to be applied to be zoned business use or mixed use in the future. We asked that the zoning board of appeals denied the request to subdivide the residential property and uphold the existing stipulations granted in 2005 on the property for the private use of the Arts Academy and the barn complex, which was, which was that it may only be for the intended use of an arts academy. With hours at the discretion of the Planning and Zoning Commission, that all parking will be on the property with no offsite parking and approved with the exception of the West Barn being used as the performing arts academy. And this seemed to be one that I read earlier on. And this one, again, is from Bruce and Mary Ann Perron, 450 Hartford Avenue. Okay.
Okay.
That's it.
All right.
Comments?
All right. And did we have anybody else who's on the line who wanted to speak to this application during the hearing? Anyone who wanted to speak on the application for 411 to 431 Hartford Avenue that has not had a chance to speak?
Yes, I do.
All right. Would you give us your name and address, please?
Yes, Betty Standish, 278 Hartford Avenue. I'm the program director at the academy. And I want to thank the Bucks for this incredible opportunity to be gifted this part of their legacy. And I just want everybody to know that the academy is a business. I mean, we are taking money and we pay out instructors. We bring in an incredible amount of money into the town. We have people staying locally. Half of our students come from out of state, so they, for the workshops. So they stay in local places. They eat locally. So we are bringing in money into the town. You know, it's a positive. It's an economic positive. I also want to say that as a nonprofit, nonprofit, we could not go out for any renovation money for the barns unless we own the property. The Historic Preservation Trust, all the foundations do not grant you anything until you own the property, that you take possession of the property. And so therefore, we were stuck between a rock and a hard place. The Bucks could not renovate. We couldn't do anything. Yes, we are a small operation, but I have to say that most of our money comes from classes and workshops, so we're earning it. And we're earning it through wise choices of instructors, through keen public relations. We have established social media presence. And it's a lot of hard work, but we are bringing notice to this town. And I think it's something that the town should be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there other, any other comments from anybody who's on the line?
If I may speak again, this is Charles Stewart. Having heard everyone's comments and particularly being aware that a zoning change would be required to change it from residential, it seems to me that anything of significance has been addressed. And any, I know it still requires a great deal of effort and work on everybody's part, including the neighborhood. And I think people will probably be willing to do that. So in any case, I think that it's, my opinion is very positive.
All right. Thank you. Yeah. Mr. and Mrs. Buck, I have one additional question for you, if I may. In the time that the school at the academy has operated on the property, have you had any complaints or objections from neighbors in the immediate area?
You, Jenny?
I have not.
I haven't heard any.
I have not personally heard anyone complain.
All right. Thank you. And Charles, can I pose that same question to you? Are you aware of their? I'm sorry. Hi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Charles, we have somebody who's, is there somebody who's wanting to speak on this application?
Hello, yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah, can you, I'm sorry. Can you give your name and address, please, sir?
Yes, my name is Mark Dematia. We had submitted a letter this morning about the property. And now that we hear the conversations, we sort of understand better what he's trying to do. But the conflict I have right now is that back in 2005, the reason why they gave him the exception of not using the West Barn was because he doesn't have enough onsite parking for an assembly space. And currently, he has two very large barns with not enough parking for those barns. So out of the four barns he has there, two have been renovated, which has the requirement for parking, and the two that have not been renovated won't have the required onsite parking if he goes to an assembly use. And if your, if the variance is no offsite parking, what's the point of renovating two barns for an academy when they can't park, there's nowhere to park? So by dividing the property, you sort of get half a, half a use of a barn.
All the things going on at the same time.
So how does, how does that work? How do you, how do you divide the property, let them renovate the barns, but then don't let them park offsite because they don't have enough parking to begin with? And I guess that's what was the reason back in 2005, the ZBA gave them the exception to not renovate the large barns. So they could at least start the process of the two smaller barns, which they did. So I mean, I'm in favor of the Art Academy staying. Great neighbors. I'm just concerned down the road, if something happens and all of a sudden they decide to leave, you got a parcel that's residential with four structures on it that isn't residential, somebody's going to say, gee, what do we do? We want to do something with this property and it goes south. So that's really my concern. Again, Mark Dematia, 456 Hartford Avenue. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Charles, can I come back to you with the question that I had? Are you aware from the town perspective, have there been any complaints about the school since it's been in operation?
No, Mr. Chairman, I've not had, I've been with the town for a little over two years now. I've not had any kind of complaint regarding the school. So no, that's as though I've never had a complaint.
Okay. All right. I'd like to, I know we've had extended conversation and appreciate everybody's input and feedback. I'd like to come back, Mr. and Mrs. Buck, to you to just close that out to see if there's any additional comment you wish to make?
Hang on one second. Mark has raised his hand multiple times. I just want to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have good view of everybody. Thanks, Kevin.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Charles read off a letter from me at the beginning of this. I am the chairman of the Weathersfield Academy for the Arts. I'm also direct neighbors with Doug Buck across the street. In fact, I live in the Josiah Buck house. And since I moved in, I've been very aware of the role that the Bucks have had in Old Weathersfield. And we've been here for eight generations. I think this is a tremendous gift. To clear up a little bit about what the academy would be, what kind of changes would take place if this variance were granted, I can tell you that there wouldn't be very much changes at all. In fact, you know, we're quiet, but we're vibrant. We're good neighbors. And in general, on the day to day, you wouldn't see any issues. But as Betty and a few other people have mentioned, what owning the property would enable us to do would be to renovate the barns and not necessarily for a mass meeting hall or a space that would allow for hundreds of people. What allowed us to do is actually preserve and restore what are unquestionably one of the, you know, cornerstones of historic buildings in Old Weathersfield. And in particular, this part of Old Weathersfield, which borders Hartford here on the north side, it really is a staple. And I think that there's no way to actually preserve these barns than through this gift. On top of that, you do have the academy, which is doing very well, even though this COVID has really kind of thrown a wrench into what would have been a really robust year of classes. We do some online classes now. Still, we're still bringing in income, but we had an art competition along with a large event planned for September that we had to scrap essentially. But we actually do pretty well. And kind of the reason why we take money in and give it out is because we're constantly spending money on bringing in high-class instructors. And so we remain very true to what the academy's purpose is. It's not flashy. It's not something that is going to make huge amounts of money. But you know, we're sort of the quiet corner here. We just offer really good instruction and want to be good neighbors. So anyway, I'm also willing to answer any questions you have of me. I've been the chairman now for four or five months. I've only been on the board for about a year, but if any of the neighbors want to ask me some questions, more than happy to. I will just say that this gift, this very generous gift by the Bucks will place the academy in a position to not only continue on with our mission, but also to help restore those barns. Thank you.
So I do have, I'll ask you one question, if I may, just because it came up from some of the other comments. The vision that the academy would have for the barns is renovation, not conversion into additional studio space, or can you speak to that?
I can. And so there were plans drawn up a while ago. I haven't sat down and looked at them in detail myself, but we probably would want to use those barns for more studio space. We, we don't have any, as in right now, we don't have any plans to renovate and go forward that are in the works. Actually, this is sort of a little bit of a surprise that this kind of popped up on our radar. And I think Mr. Buck and Mrs. Buck just sort of said, listen, it's time. We want to do this for you. But having said that, more studio space does not necessarily mean we're bringing in hundreds of people that have very large classes. These are small classes. These are relatively small classrooms. And you know, there's, you know, I've never seen the park go up full. And we do have more room for parking, as Mr. Buck mentioned several times, is that we do have, we do have more room for parking in there. So long story short, yes, you probably would want to put in a little more studio space. Will it increase the traffic a whole lot? Will it increase the need for more parking? I don't get that feeling.
Can I say something? Why don't you say something? You have to call in?
Yeah. Ms. Buck, go ahead.
Oh, I'd just like to say something. The wonderful thing about the two big barns, the East Barn and the West Barn, is that they can be, the areas can be channeled into small, wonderful studios for sculptors, for private rentals by artists themselves. It doesn't necessarily mean that everything is going to be a classroom with a ton of people going there. They will, studios of private artists will help, and they can get grants as well. If we want it to be an artistic community, we want it to be a school of excellence. And it can, it can also have some music training. It can be whatever we want it to be. But we want it to be the best, and we want to serve the community. And we especially want to serve our children and educate them in the finer arts.
All right. Kevin, thanks for flagging earlier. Is there anybody else that I've missed? Again, my view is somewhat limited. Does anybody else need to be included for commentary? All right. In that case, Mr. and Mrs. Buck, I will leave you with an opportunity for a last word before we move on to the next application. Anything else you'd like to add?
Well, we'd just like to thank our neighbors for the input and the ideas and so on, and for the support. I just have a comment.
And concerns.
Yeah, and they're concerned too, because they're concerned about the neighborhood too, as we are. As far as parking goes, Mark Dematia is right about that. And the academy could not expand without additional parking. And he knows the building code and all that. So we have a little extra space on our property that could be used for additional parking. But there is definitely a limit, and the building code would enforce that. So there's no way we can expand classrooms and large assembly facilities without additional parking. You have to meet the building codes.
Have we not asked Mr. Baldwin any kind of occasion to use his parking?
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much, and thank you to all of the folks who gave input. I'm going to, I'm going to move us to our second application as we continue the public hearing. This will be application number 6232-20, variance from section 3.6.5 accessory buildings and structures to allow accessory building garage to be two feet from side lot line as against three feet minimum required as shown on plot plan. Residential Zone B, location 237 Brimfield Road. And Charles, again, if I can go to you for the staff report? Charles, are you ready with the staff report? Charles, you're muted, I believe.
Yes, let me just unwrit myself now, Mr. Chairman. So yes, thank you very much. So to give you background to this application here, a call was received from the adjoining property, the property to the rear of 237 Brimfield Road, and that's number 16 Clearfield Road. And they suggested to me that 237 Brimfield Road went and constructed a foundation for a garage in their rear yard, and that it has caused their property to be flooded. I also received a telephone call from the owners of 237 Brimfield Road. And they had been in touch with the building department for a building permit. And they had been in touch with the building department for a building permit for this, for this garage after they had put the foundation in. And they were asked by the zoning official to seek zoning advice since it appeared, it appeared to them, to the building official, to be close to the fence. But usually a fence seen and a fence, the first thing you see, your eyes tell you when you see a fence, that that's the property line. So he thought it was too close to the fence, and hence it probably is too close to the property line. So I, and they wanted me to, applicants wanted me to come and take a look to see if the proposed garage would meet the sideline setback requirements. So my inspection revealed that the concrete foundation was in place for the garage, and it appeared to be close to the side property fence as stated by the building official. The applicants told me then that there existed a garage several years ago before they purchased the property, and that they purchased the property and moved in with that timber frame garage at approximately two feet from the western side boundary of the property. The applicant then told me that the rear property line setback is three feet. So it's just that two feet side yard that did not comply. So I explained to the applicant that the general rule for setback accessory buildings and structures is five feet. However, section 3.6.5 makes an exception that residential lots having an average width of less than 65 feet may be located within three feet of the side and rear property lines. The subject property having a width of 60 feet would be entitled to this exception. That is, they would be entitled to have their accessory structures three feet from the property line. So I told the applicant that the timber frame garage that was in existence maybe deemed illegally non-conforming use and may be repaired or reinforced structurally, or it may be replaced in the exact location. If, for instance, it was burned by a fire, or there was some kind of natural occurrence that caused it to come down, then they could put it back in the exact same location. So they told me though, that the garage had deteriorated beyond repair, and that the only way to make it suitable and safe was to tear it down and rebuild it after seeking the building permit. I told them that if it was brought to my attention at that time, and I inspected it and got the input from the building official to make that judgment call, I could make that determination and say, hey, between myself and the building official, we could say it cannot be repaired unless you change the foundation. So I had not seen the building before it was demolished, and I would not be in a position to make that call. So at this point, the applicant inquired about his options and asked if I could let them go ahead with the building as they were unaware of the requirements of the regulations. I advised them that the only way they would be allowed to continue building is if they obtained a variance from the zoning board of appeals. So the applicant had a legal, had a non-conforming building, which according, it may have been in existence before the regulations changed. So before they exist, before the regulations changed to require three feet from the property boundary, as the record showed no prior variance was granted for this building. Hence, the owners would have been required to prove the legal nonconformity of building before given the approval to demolish and reconstruct there by applying to the town for a certificate of nonconformity, by proving from past records that building was in existence legally before the laws changed, and that no has become a legal and nonconforming building. So in concluding, the applicant has now applied to the zoning board of appeals for a variance to allow the side yard setback of two feet as against three feet required by the regulations. This variance, if granted, will have a minimal impact on the existing community based on the fact that the building was already existing for several years and with no known adverse effect on the drainage of the property. The town engineer has also sent me his findings arising out of a site visit, and he has stated that he saw no issues with past or current drainage problems associated with the garage.
All right.
I could have possibly, yeah, okay, that's it. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Charles. Could we have the applicants unmute? And if you would, give us your name and address for the record?
Hi, this is Odera Mano, 237 Brimfield Road, and my husband, Phil Dion Bajo. We, Charles explained it very well. I mean, what, I don't know, do you want us to give a version of the, or?
Is there anything you want to add? Or do you want us to just ask any questions?
The garage, I think, has been built since 1963 or 1964. We purchased this property about 10 years ago. So the garage was there, but it was in pretty bad shape. I think our area in here, in where we are, we have a lot of water problems, like in the neighborhood. So the foundation was cracked and everything. And for the last two years, it was pretty much falling apart. So we had even contacted the insurance. They had seen it, that's, and there's nothing we can do. It's a water thing, you know, the foundation had cracked and the whole garage had shifted. So after the last storm that we had in April, the wind, the whole garage shifted. So we decided to take it down and pretty much started rebuilding it at the same exact position until we, oh, sorry, I don't know what's happening. Am I doing something or not?
No, I think Charles may be sharing something eventually here.
Oh, okay.
Keep going.
Yeah, yeah. So and then pretty much, we just started rebuilding until we realized that we needed zoning because, I don't know, when it was built, maybe it was two feet instead of three feet. And Charles explained the rest, you know, how.
Okay. Yeah, you answered one of my questions in terms of when the original structure was built. And what you are proposing is exact same dimensions and the exact same location?
We put the exact, exact same thing, exact, yeah.
Okay.
Exact same spot. Everything is exactly the same.
Okay. And then, Charles, back to what you had said. If this had been the result of a natural disaster or some other cause of the original structure coming down, the previous nonconformity would have held.
Right. And this on your screen here is a photograph of the garage as it existed before. So that's the garage, that's the fence, and that's the clothes. You can see the clothes proximity to the fence.
All right. And to the applicants, to the neighbor who's on the immediate other side of the fence, have you had discussions with them? Did you talk to them about the application at all?
I think, yes, we have talked to all of them. I think our neighbor in the back, we had initially started the complaint. It's because we all have a water issue, and we had even applied with the town about a year ago. We all signed a petition that we wanted the town to, you know, pretty much take care of the water. But now we're, I mean, ooh, sorry about the mess. So I just realized that. So I think he had complained about the water. It's not, because the garage has always been there. It's not like it's blocking the view or anything. I think it was water problem. But we also, I mean, this gave us an opportunity because if we're building this foundation, we are going to do drainage around the foundation. So that will take care at his property, too. It will help. So, because that garage was so old, the foundation was cracked, and all the water from their backyard was coming to the foundation of the garage. And that's why it deteriorated and it broke down. So that's, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Charles, can you pull up that first photo again that you had?
Okay. So this that we're looking at is the existing foundation. Can you see that on your screen?
Yes.
You'd like to see the original garage?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
Did you guys do anything to the pavement at all?
Well, we took out the, the previous foundation was basically just cracked and broken. So we took out that, I mean, it wasn't even a foundation. It was a slab, slab floor.
We had to raise the.
We had to, yeah, take the whole.
Because all the water, it goes towards the garage. So we had to raise the garage.
Yep.
And bring the water to come the other way.
It looks like the overall structure, though, grew based on the width of your driveway.
What, the, like on the side?
Yeah. Yeah, it looks like on the, you know, on this photo, your garage is barely, isn't past the edge of the existing driveway. But in the other photo, it looked like it was almost three or four feet past the driveway.
Well, probably they took it out or something.
For what?
When they did the foundation.
Charles, in your assessment, did you confirm the dimensions?
Which dimensions, Mr. Chairman?
The, so it looks like, Kevin, am I correct? Your question is whether the dimensions of the new structure are the same as the original?
It doesn't, it doesn't appear to be based on the driveway, but.
We haven't done any changes on the driveway. I don't know if.
Let me look at the foundation again. Okay. So. So Commissioner Tedesco, you were saying, you're saying to us that the footprint is not necessarily the same?
It doesn't appear to be.
Okay. And that's the, that's the mere fact why they are seeking a variance because if, if they were rebuilding the, if they were maintaining the, the nonconforming use, the nonconformity, so to speak, then they would be required to build in the exact same location. So because I don't know if they're in the exact same location or anything, that is why they're applying for the variance. So the variance will cover the fact that they're not building in the same location. They're not maintaining the nonconformity.
Okay.
Okay. So I, I have a, oh, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, no, that's fine. I was just, I was going to move to that next to see if we had any commentants either in favor or against.
I have both a, a report from the engineer, from the town engineer, Derek D. Gregor, professional engineer, and I also have a letter from adjoining property owner. And this is the same property owner that called to express concern about the drainage. And it reads as follows. "Dated May 22nd, 2020, to whomever it may concern, I am writing in regards to the application for the project on the property at 237 Brimfield Road, Weathersfield. I have no problem with the people wanting to put up a garage. My concern is my backyard filling up with water when we have heavy rains or, and days with a lot of rain and melting snow. You, on a, on a day with a lot of rain or melting snow, you can swim in my yard in the summertime and ice skate in the winter. There is no way we can enjoy our backyard as it is either filled with water or too soggy. Now they want to put up a garage. Not only is the water in the middle of our yard, but now it is on the, on the border, this seems to be, on the border of our yard and theirs. It's on the border of our yard and theirs. My concern is the water doesn't seep into the ground very fast, and it will be a breeding ground for mosquitoes as there is no drainage. I moved here in 2001, and I had, and I had someone come out regarding the, regarding the water problem then. So he's saying that since 2001, he has had someone come out to, to, to look at the water problem. And that seems to me that that was when the existing, the original timber frame garage was in place. And. And.
And, Charles, I'm sorry, I missed in the beginning. Is this the neighbor to the left or immediately?
Neighbor, this is the neighbor exactly behind the property, Mr. Chairman.
So on Clearfield?
If. If you look at this next feature on your screen, on your screen here, you'll see that post in the rear. That post in the rear, it's, it's on 16 Clearfield Road. And the, the area that's flooded with water is where you see I'm moving my cursor right here behind these chairs, behind this foundation wall, this area right here. And when I went there and to take a look, it had rained recently, and there was really some amount of water there, you know? So there was some amount of water. So it's not a question of whether water is in their backyard whenever it rains. There is water in the backyard whenever it rains. And sometimes, based on the slope of a property, water will seep somewhere under your property. And some kind of drainage thing has to be put in place to alleviate these kind of problems. So from 2001, he has had someone come out, take a look, and nothing was done. I don't feel that in 19 years, anything has been done. I suppose nothing will get done, and this, this time either. So the problem, according to the adjoining owner, has been with them for 19 years. I have an email from the engineer, and I will attempt to read that for you, Mr. Chairman. And it says, "I recently visited 237 Brimfield Road to inspect the new garage foundation that had been installed to replace the old one that was demolished, and the installation of a drainage system in the rear yard that was underway." So what the, what the, what the engineer is saying is that the installation of a drainage system in the rear yard was underway. "At the time of my visit, there was some standing water to the north of the foundation at the rear of 16 Clearfield Road. However, it was unclear if that was related to the new construction or if it was just because the surrounding area is very flat and clay layers are present near the surface, that slow steepage in the soil would occur at that, at that particular area. I spoke with the property owners who indicated that they thought their contractor planned to install an under drain behind the garage, which may help alleviate some of the standing water. an under drain behind the garage, which may help alleviate some of the standing water. I suggested that they also grade the area of their property towards new yard drain that was to be installed to the east of the garage to encourage positive drainage. Other than that, I have no specific concerns related to the construction of the new garage. Signed Derek D. Gregor, professional engineer, town of Weathersfield Engineering Division, 505 Silas Dean Highway in Weathersfield.
All right, thank you. If I could go back to the applicants on that last point, so you're planning to put in a yard drain as part of the project?
Well, basically, that's how the project started. We have been having water problems, so, and part of that, I mean, that's why the garage fell down because in general, we had water problems, like our backyard, you know, his backyard, our neighbor's backyard, we also did a petition with the town to take care of it. It's about 20 families that, it's like an area that it has water problems. So we did the drainage and then we decided, you know, we started with the garage too, and Derek came, he's the town engineer for, he saw the drainage, he looked at all the area, and we continued doing all the backyard and the back of the garage and the sides. We put like a drainage system.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, did you have a question?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna ask Charles, did, did the engineer take any notice of, you know, I mean, if they're building a bigger structure, they're decreasing the permeable area that water could flow into. So in theory, they're, they're essentially perpetuating the problem. Um, is the drain gonna help mitigate that or?
That's what the engineer says. He says that the drain would help to mitigate the problem. He, he did not mention anything about the size of the garage being an issue. He said he did not see any issue with the, um, construction of this new garage as it relates to a drainage problem in, in the yard. He stated that both properties had water seeping in their, um, rear yard when he visited.
I'm sorry, can I, can I answer maybe, Kevin?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, well, basically, it's not that we are taking our water and draining it on his backyard. This is rainwater we're talking about. And this rainwater used to come to our backyard, you know, and so this is not that his water is coming to ours or we're putting a water hose to this. This is rainwater that we can't necessarily be able to control where it goes. We have paid a lot of money to take care of our own backyard. They can do the same too, to, you know, to pretty much make it a little bit better. I mean, at, at that point, it's everybody's property, so I don't think that we, what we're doing is gonna affect, you know, his property. Cause he had had that problem. It's been a problem for 20 years.
All right, Dan, you have a question?
Yes, where's the rainwater going to? Are you putting gutters on the garage? Is it going towards the drain?
It, well, up till now.
Drainage? The rainwater from the, um, from the roof of the garage?
Uh, we.
It goes to a dry well. It goes directly into the dry well? You don't have any gutters or downspouts in the garage or that's not the plan? Downspouts, no.
We haven't built it yet.
We haven't built it yet.
We haven't built it yet.
Is it in the plans to put?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the gutters, yes. And the downspouts of the water would go down the driveway? Yep. And where's the drain gonna be in the backyard for the drainage system? In the backyard, yes. And where does that flow out to? Does it just disperse in the ground? Is it like a flow well? Now, now it's in the backyard, it's a dry well, so. It's a dry well, okay. I got it, okay. Thank you. Yep.
All right, Charles, can I come back to you? Do we have any either, um, feedback that you need to read into the record or anybody on the line you're aware of who wants to speak to this?
We have no other, um, public comment. I don't.
All right, I can, I can ask generally then. Is there anybody else?
Let me just, um, unmute these callers just to make sure that, um, cause I'm not sure which caller is which. Um, I know some, some spoke before. I don't know if any of these numbers.
Yeah, and thank you everyone for your patience with us. So do we have anybody who's on the line who wishes to speak on this application? 237 Brimfield. Is there anybody who wants to speak either in favor or against? Okay, we had a pretty good crowd on the first ones. That might be the numbers you're seeing, Charles. Uh, all right, commissioners, any other questions related to this one? Okay, um, and applicants, any last comments you wanna give before we move forward?
I wanna comment on the, uh, Kevin said about increase in the garage.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, uh, if you look at the existing pictures.
Charles, are you able to pull those back up relatively easily? We just wanted to do, so they could comparison again of the, uh.
When you say existing, you're talking about this foundation here?
Existing one, no, the, the old one.
The other one of the previous structure, Charles.
Oh, okay, you're talking about the timber frame garage. Okay, so let me see if I can get that a little larger for you. There it is.
Can you make it a little larger?
Okay, I'll try to do that, um.
Now, if you see, if you see the fence line, my garage, the old one, it was right on the fence and, uh, the sofa, it's on the neighbor's house, neighbor's side. So if you look real close, the fence is hitting, it's hitting the garage.
On the.
The, the thing I was talking about is, is Charles on the right-hand side. I, I wasn't, it wasn't necessarily the left. So if you look at the right-hand side in this picture, if you.
Yeah. Garage?
Yes.
Oh, what you wanted to stand more this side of.
You can see that there's about maybe, I don't know, let's say a foot, foot and a half of pavement that this, that the garage doesn't go past.
Right, because we moved from the fence.
Because we moved it from the fence.
A little bit.
We moved it, we shifted.
So it doesn't go.
So we can, so we can get further from the neighbor's fence as far as I can because I can't go too far because I won't be able to use the garage, get out of the garage.
Of the driveway, yeah.
All right, so we're saying, if I, if I, I don't wanna, if I can interpret, uh, what I'm hearing.
Before, there was no fence. It was like right on the fence, yeah.
Right, okay, so you've same dimension, but you've shifted a few feet.
Right, right, right. So we can get a further from the fence.
Further from the fence, but at the same time be able to come in and out of the driveway, obviously. We don't wanna shift it, you know, like.
If you zoom, this one, you'll see the difference when from the left, we went to the right.
We left it from the fence about a foot or something. What is it?
You see my, you see my point? So the, the foundation, when they poured it, they poured the foundation a little bit more to the right so we can be further from the, from the line.
Okay.
All right, Kevin, any further question on that?
I'm good.
All right, um, and, and to the applicants one last time, anything else you wanna add?
No, we're done.
All right, thank you very much. And Charles, just to clarify, we did cover all of the input that you had to read into the record.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, that's the only, uh, letter of concern that we got regarding 3.
Okay. All right, so at this point, if we could have a motion from one of the commissioners to close the public hearing and move into our public meeting.
Move to close the public hearing.
All right, Elizabeth, can we have a second?
Okay.
Second.
All right, so with that, we have closed our public hearing. We'll move into the public meeting. And just a reminder for all of you who are listening in, this is the opportunity where just the commissioners and zoning enforcement officer will discuss. We have no additional input that will come, so you're welcome to obviously stay with us so you hear what we say. But, uh, please, if you would, just mute your lines while we do this. And, um, I'll begin with, if I get my page back in front of me, reading the first application now for the public meeting, application number 6231-20, variance from section 5.2 permitted principal uses to allow business use in the residential district, i.e. former accessory business use, private arts academy, to be permitted as a principal use arising out of proposed subdivision of lot known as 411 to 431 Hartford Avenue, which houses the academy in the accessory structure known as 431 Hartford Avenue, as shown on assessors map submitted. Residential Zone B, location 411 to 431 Hartford Avenue, applicant Douglas R. Buck. Um, before we move into discussion, Rita and Paul, we just need a determination as to which of you would, uh, like to vote on this one as opposed to the second application?
I don't mind voting on this one.
I don't care.
Okay, um, well, Paul, I heard you first, so we'll let you vote on this one and Rita, you'll vote on the second one if that works.
Sure.
Okay, all right, and everybody, all six of us are obviously encouraged and welcome to participate in discussion when we move to vote. Uh, Rita, you'll just sit this one out. Does anybody wanna offer opening comments on what we heard?
I'll say something. I'm not gonna vote, but, um, you know, I understand some of the concerns about the, um, zoning change that it could go to business, but I think it's really the fact that the word business is in there upset some people. Um, I think that it's gonna stay residential zoned. I think the planning and zoning commission certainly would not change, um, a historic piece of property like this that had historic barns on it to a business zone. So I think that is probably not something that would happen, but I'm sure that as you write the, um, you can put something in there as a stipulation that would also help that in the future. That's it.
Anybody else?
I, I have a, I have a comment. I was raising my hand, but unfortunately you didn't see me for that one, but.
I'm sorry, Paul.
Uh, no, no, that's okay. I think, um, also, one of the other things I, I thought that needed to be clarified for the community sake was, um, the different, um, the difference between the bucks owning the property and a 501(c)(3) being the, um, the art academy paying them rent and opposed to the art academy, um, actually owning the property. And, um, the reason, I, I fully understand it because I've worked with this. Um, I just think it could be, it could get a little hairy for the community as far as, you know, what's going on and the reason why the term business needs to be used in, um, in the application and why this, it's ref, even though it's a school wise referred to as a business. So I, um, you know, I, I just thought that, that maybe needed to be cleared up a little bit, but, um, you didn't see my hand, so that's, that's, um, that's okay.
No, and I appreciate that clarification. Alpologies for, uh, missing before. I was in trouble moving between the different views, so. Um, yeah, and I thought there was a good comment that came in on that, just in relation, you know, it is, although a nonprofit, it is a business in that they're bringing in income and they are paying out, uh, expenses. It's just not designed, you know, the goal is not to have that margin be, uh, the ultimate end game there. Let's turn, uh, Dan, Kevin, Elizabeth, any comment from any of you? Okay, um, I'm gonna just, I'll give a quick overview from my perspective. I think, um, this is, uh, I think we had great, great discussion, good input from the community on this and, um, really productive discussion, I felt, in terms of clarifying some of the original concerns that several people raised. And, um, you know, we have a, um, a precedent of the 2005 variance that has some stipulations and, um, seems if we can keep in, um, the spirit or even more to the point, the letter of those, um, stipulations, we probably will, um, at least from my perspective, seems will address the concerns that were raised by the neighbors. So with that, I'll ask if anybody wants to make a motion and, um, if not, I will try to formulate one. And Paul, I saw your hand. Are you gonna move? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so, um, if he, uh, so I'd like to make a motion, um, and pretty much mirror what was already in place for 2005 when they were granted that variance, that all the, um, those stipulations stay in place, um, with the property if we are going to approve this.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with the stipulations from the 2005 variance. Do we have a second on that?
One second.
All right, um, in, I actually am going to, um, well, Charles, I have, I have a procedural question for you.
Yes.
Um, because we, as we talk through this, one of the pieces that's important to remember is that what we're discussing and voting on ultimately is the variance for the primary use of 431 if in fact the split of property occurs. But that's contingent on planning and zoning approving that. Do we need to, from your perspective, add that as a stated stipulation or is that just a matter of fact?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you do need to add that.
Okay, all right, so I, um, would like, go ahead, Kevin.
Even, uh, just going a little bit further, do, cause the 2005 stipulations, um, that, that, uh, would not allow them to renovate the West Barn, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I mean, going forward, would we want?
Well, I'm sorry, the way it's written is the West Barn would not be used for the performing art studio.
Okay, but it did sound like they, they were intending on, uh, potentially using it for, um, you know, some, some space. Uh, not necessarily like a mass gathering hall, but, uh, in some fashion. So would we want to look at that as a, maybe an amendment to the 2005 stipulations?
I, I think parking comes into consideration when you throw in the West Barn. I don't know if it meets the parking requirements.
Yeah, that's why I, I think, Dan, both of us were on the same page for kind of asking about that initially. And then maybe that's something, maybe that's another stipulation that we're throwing in there that, um, you know, obviously they've, they've gotta conform, uh, with parking to go along with that.
Okay, um, I'm gonna make an attempt to amend our motion and, um, see if, uh.
We wanna withdraw the motion?
Uh, yeah, sorry.
And then we'll make a new motion. Is that easier?
Yeah, that, that's probably easier, yeah, so, uh.
Paul wants to withdraw his motion. I'll withdraw my second. We can make a new motion.
Sure, I'll, I'll move to withdraw the motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, all right, thanks. So we're gonna start with a clean slate. I'm gonna move that, I, I, I move that the application be approved with the following stipulations. That granting of the variance is contingent on the lots split being approved by planning and zoning. That the intended use is as the art academy only. All parking will be on property, no off-site parking permitted. And any. And any renovation or use of the West Barn must be pursuant to historic district parameters and also parking guidelines as set by planning and zoning. And I'm gonna add one additional stipulation that just clarifies any additional transfer of the property away from the art academy nullifies the variance and this goes without saying, but I think we should stipulate it nullifies the variance and the zoning remains residential.
I'll second.
Could you repeat this number for Mr. Chairman?
Uh, let's see, I think I can get a yes. Um, so I'm gonna repeat them all just so everybody hears it again. So um stipulations that uh the variance is contingent on the lot split being approved by planning and zoning. The intended use is as the art academy only. Number three would be all parking will be on property, no offsite parking permitted. Number four would be any renovation or changed use of the West Barn would be pursuant to historic district parameters and also parking guidelines as necessary from planning and zoning. And number five was is that just a statement that any additional transfer of the property away from the art academy would nullify the variance and the property remains zoned residential.
I can I can second it again.
Okay, I'm gonna take that as a sign that I got it uh the same the second time as I did the first time. That's good. All right, do we want to have any, uh, anybody have any additional comment or further discussion? And Charles, I include you in that question. Any uh commentary or advice? All right, and Charles, did you get the five stipulations? Charles, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Yes, I got them, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. Um, all right, so if there is, uh, Dan, did you wanna weigh in?
Nope, I'm good. I just took myself off of you.
Gotcha. All right, well, then I guess we are ready to come to a vote uh on the approving the application uh with the stipulation stated. It's been moved and seconded, so we'll come to vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the variance is passed, it's stipulated. And we will move to our second application, which is application number six two three two dash two zero variance from section three dot six dot five accessory buildings and structures to allow accessory building garage to be two feet from the side lot line as against three feet minimum required as shown on plot plan. Residential Zone B, location two thirty-seven Burnfield Road, applicant applicant Claudia in Baho. All right, do we have any opening discussion on that one?
On that one?
Do we need a motion to approve to take it off?
Uh, no, we can actually, and I I had been off on this in previous meetings. We can actually discuss before that's a motion. Yeah, thank you for that. I that you caught me from a couple meetings ago. We had to do it the other way. So I I'll start. I mean, I think that um the concerns around um drainage and standing water are um very quite understandable and 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 those are real. Um, I think the challenge I have weighing that out is that if the applicants were putting a structure three feet from the side, we wouldn't be having this discussion and there would be no discussion around drainage. And so we on top of that, then we have you know, drainage, a dry well that is being put in as part of the project and we had, you know, reporting from the town engineer that Charles read in that um really didn't seem to indicate, uh, and I and I put weight in that because I certainly am not an engineer by any stretch, but I put weight in that in terms of there not being uh at least a significant adding to the problem with um being allowed to rebuild the structure. So I'll pause there and let anybody else weigh in. All right, um, and then this one, let's see, Rita, you were voting this one, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, all right, do we have anybody who wants to make a motion on this application?
I make a motion that we accept the application as written.
I'll second.
All right, so we had uh Rita and then I heard Elizabeth first and then we had another second in there also, so. Charles, do you need any clarification or are we good?
No, you're good.
Okay. All right, uh, so we have motion to approve as submitted and it's been seconded, so we'll come to a vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And all all opposed? All right, the variance is passed. Um, at this point, uh, I'd like to make a motion on the agenda. Let me ask you a question, Charles. If we were to, well, actually, let me ask you this way. We might be able to do this quickly. So we have a quorum of folks who are here for the April meeting. Next up is approval of minutes from the April meeting. Did anyone have any? Has everyone who was here had a chance to read through them? Okay, and did anybody have any corrections or changes that need to be made?
No.
Okay, uh, in that case, can I get a motion to approve the April minutes?
Motion to approve the April minutes.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Rita. All right, all in favor of approving the minutes as submitted? Aye?
Aye.
Abstain because I wasn't here.
Abstain.
Okay. Okay, gotcha. So we had uh so we had me, Rita, Kevin, and Dan voting on that. So that was a four four oh two abstain. All right, the um, at this point, we have an opportunity for anybody who is still on the line or any commissioners who wanted to raise any business that was not uh, well, any other, any public comment, I should say, on zoning Board of Appeals matters. So I'll give a second for anybody who wants to unmute to give any additional feedback. Going once, going twice, all right? I would like to ask that we consider giving the hour, uh, tabling again our finalization of officers. It is an important thing. I don't want to diminish it. I'm happy to stay if the group would like to do that. I just wanna be sensitive to time as we move past nine o'clock now on tonight's meeting.
I think we're capable. Uh, we still don't have all, it would be nice to have the rest of the the folks here.
Yeah, I agree. It'd be nice to have uh Michael with us as well and and we have Sandra now too. Yeah, so, all right, I'm gonna, I'd I'd like to move that we uh table formalization of officers to the June meeting. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, we will pick that up with the June meeting. And with that, uh, thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Charles. Thank you, IT support. And thank you to everyone, anybody who's still out there from the community who stuck with us all this time. Appreciate the patience with our virtual meeting and uh lots of good productive discussion tonight. Thank you. Have a good evening and stay well.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye, stay well.
Charles, you can end the recording.
I've already done so.
It's still showing recording. You can end the recording.